Good morning. Welcome to East Brandywine Township's morning session, November, November 4th. Sorry about running a few minutes late. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Seeing that there are none, let's move on to the approval of the board minutes of October 21, 2021 session.
I make a motion that the minutes be approved and submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to new business. Cedarville Engineering Proposals for the 2022 NPDS MS4 program. With support, Matt?
Thank you. This year, we've received a proposal from Cedarville Engineering for MS4 support. This year's proposal is approximately $17,500 less than last year. The main reason for the reduction in the cost is there were numerous inspections, on lot, MS4 inspections for 2021 that will not need to be done in 2022. So respectfully request the board approve the proposal from Cedarville Engineering for $46,300 for 2022.
You have any questions? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to the preliminary budget, Luke?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Please bear with me while I queue up a PowerPoint, and I hope no one cringes as I say that.
Before you, on the screen here is a summary of the 2022 budget process, and I want to draw your attention to two points on there. First, this year is different than prior years. It was anticipated that we would not have a budget committee and that staff would prepare a draft budget for the board's consideration, and we would have a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors originally scheduled for October 28th where staff would present the budget. That did not occur, and it did not occur because of me, and there were two reasons for that. One, I did not get the draft budget in time, done in time to share with the board, and also I had a family medical emergency which necessitated canceling the meeting. So I appreciate the board's patience, both with my tardiness and working with me in being there to support my family. The second mark, number four, is where we are today. There is a draft budget in your packet. Next steps are, on November 18th, the board will be asked to consider authorizing staff to advertise a proposed budget. That is at your regular PM session. On December 2nd, the board will be asked to consider resolutions adopting the real estate tax and solid waste fees at your regular AM session. On December 16th, the Board of Supervisors will be asked to consider a resolution adopting the final budget at your regular PM session. And then lastly, the Second Class Township Code requires that the board adopt a balanced budget prior to December 31st. So that's where we are, where we've been. Let's talk about the goal today. There is a draft before you. I'll be asking the board to provide feedback on some select critical aspects of the draft budget so that a preliminary budget can be prepared for you on November 18th. The draft that's here before you today represents the manager's requests and the requests of department heads and committee chair after the manager has exercised some discretion in paring down these requests. The budget before you is balanced and written as though your answer to all the critical questions is yes. Line items associated with critical decisions in your budget are highlighted in yellow. So the deliverables for the day are eight decision points. They are: Cost of living adjustments across the board for staff, an additional staffing request by Township Administration, an additional staffing request by Public Works, an additional staffing request by the Police Department, the Public Works' capital budget, the Bonsville Mills' capital budget, tax rates, and then any individual line items the board would ask staff to provide more detail on. All right, I'm going to do a brief introduction to the funds. The township has a general fund, a capital fund, and those two funds are further segregated into the bullet points you see on the screen. We have two open space funds. One is the place where we put the funds that come from the referendum, that's the earned income tax. The other open space fund is paid by developer impact fees. We have a fire services fund, we have a solid waste fund, we have a liquid fuels fund, we have a traffic impact fund, and we have two pension funds, a non-uniformed pension fund and a uniformed pension fund. The next slide is going to highlight in red and green those funds for which a budget is historically and currently prepared. We prepare a budget for the general fund, the capital fund, the impact fee, open space fund, the fire services fund, the solid waste fund, and the state liquid fuels. Just a brief introduction to the township's org chart. There are two individuals who answer directly to the Board of Supervisors, that is the Chief of Police and myself. The Police Department has 15 uniformed employees, two part-time employees, and two civilian employees. The township side has four, well, we, I'll just, answering to the Township Manager is the Roadmaster and three Public Works employees, a Township Secretary, a Township Treasurer, and a Permits Administrator. The Permits Administrator also has a single staff member, which is a part-time receptionist. And just by way of further explanation for the org chart, the rectangles shown in blue are employees, the rectangle shown in red are consultants, and the rectangle shown in green are elected or appointed officials. Quick introduction to the services the township provides. We do general administration, lumped in this is finance, communication with staff, constituency service, and human resources management. We provide police protection. We administer a zoning ordinance, and we do land use planning. We have a building permits and codes enforcement department. We do park development and maintenance. We host community events. We preserve open space. We do historic preservation. We do road system maintenance, facilities maintenance, stormwater systems maintenance, emergency management, and we operate a solid waste program. Also on here are four services that we help fund or support but are provided directly by nonprofit partners. Among them are recreation programs. We partner with East Brandywine Youth Athletics and the Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium to provide those services. We provide sewage in association with the East Brandywine Township's Municipal Authority. We provide fire protection with the support of the East Brandywine Fire Company, and we provide emergency medical services with multiple partners. By way of a global introduction, I've named this slide "The Challenge." The challenge is rightsizing the township to provide quality services in a time of very rapid growth and new mandates. On your screen is the 2000 population, the 2010 population, and the 2022 population. Draw your attention to the fact that the township grew by 44% between 2010 and 2020. So decision point number one, and this is the cost of living increase to be applied across the board. Staff's recommendation is that we use 3% across the board. Our rationale is that, in the case of those employees represented by the police union, that is the cost of living that was negotiated. For the remaining staff, we have discretion, and I think we should use the same figure. The Consumer Price Index, over the last year and a half, is up 8.68%, and I've also conducted a survey of my colleagues in municipal management and find that 3% represents the median and contemplated increase. Does the board have any questions about decision point number one or any feedback you'd like to provide?
I think I'd like you to go through everything. I have my questions. I've been through the budget, I've been through it with the tax collector, and also some of the past budget members. So I think for my questions, I'll hold up to the end.
All right.
Me too.
All right. I'm happy to proceed.
Thank you.
I think decision point number two is administrative hires. I have two recommendations here. That is that we hire an assistant Township Manager or an equivalent employee of similar responsibilities with a different job title. And I have a recommendation that we make our current part-time receptionist full-time. My rationale, again, is Chester County municipal benchmarks, and I will, there's a slide that follows this one that I'd like to highlight, and then also like to draw the board's attention to the findings of our 2018 strategic assessment review. In the fall of 2018, the administrative team was five full-time equivalents. That 2018 review recommended that we split the duties of Treasurer and Secretary and hire a Treasurer. In other words, they were recommending that our administrative team be six full-time equivalents. At this time, the administrative team is four and a half full-time equivalents, so even less than at the time we conducted that survey. It's a little difficult to see, but this is a scatter plot. On the X-axis is population, and on the Y-axis is number of employees. And these are all the Chester County municipalities. Give a sense of a standard curve of the number of employees that our neighbors use to provide similar services. The red circle indicates where East Brandywine Township falls on this, on this split, and it is below the line of best fit, which leads me to infer that we are, relative to our peers in the county, understaffed. Talk about decision point number three, and in this, I may be deferring to Roadmaster Van Leeu. If there are questions later in the presentation, or if he has anything to add after I've summarized this slide. There are two recommendations on Public Works hires. One, hire a Public Works employee, and two, create the position of foreman and promote an individual who was already with the Public Works Department to the position of foreman. My rationale here, again, is that the Chester County municipal benchmarking that I referenced in decision point number two: Growth in the township facilities and land, anticipated growth in the dedication of roads in the coming years, and the draft five-year Public Works Plan presented by the Roadmaster and currently under consideration by the Board for adoption. My selected anecdote here is that in 2021, the township has 36.81 miles of road, and it is anticipated in the next year, two years, that an additional four miles, or 10% growth in the amount of roads we have to maintain, will be offered for dedication. Matt, did you have anything you would want to add to this decision point?
With the addition of the four miles, you would, a lot of people think that that would be, that the township mainly does snow plowing, like during the wintertime or whatever, and so the four miles does add additional snow plowing, but the infrastructure work that we're required to do, such as inspecting inlets, stormwater pipes, basins, and also the repairs to those facilities, currently, a lot of that work is not getting done due to the staff that we have, we currently have. I did have a part-time employee that was responsible for janitor work within the Township Building itself, but that person is no longer working for the township, and I could rely on that person to do some of the work along with the Road Department that just isn't getting done right now. The addition of another person would be, permit us to get a lot more of the work that's not getting done. Stormwater inlets really haven't been inspected for over a year, and that should be something that's done on a yearly basis, inspected and cleaned.
Just returning to the analysis we performed in 2018, at that time, the Public Works Department staffing was four and a half full-time equivalents. Their current staffing is four full-time equivalents. So that's, in spite of growth, a step back in the staffing of that department.
Excellent.
Okay, decision number four is the Police Department request for an hire. The recommendation here is that we hire an additional officer mid-year. The rationale is the growth in workload. The selected anecdote I have here is a chart provided by the Police Department that shows the growth in the number of arrests in East Brandywine Township. And I would also draw the board's attention to the findings of the 2018 strategic assessment review, which did envision growth in staffing. Chief, do you have anything to add to decision point four?
The only thing I want to add is, is the chart that we put together, the five-year projection that was contained in the assessment done in 2018, is very telling of where we're at right now. In 2020, and this, by the way, was adopted by the Board of Supervisors and was approved as far as my proposed increase, because what the formulas call for and what we actually need are two different things. And, you know, you tally your manpower for what is going on in your municipality. So for example, in 2018, we were, I estimated we needed 15 full-time and one part-time, that's where we were. As we moved on, we added one more part-time officer. So 19, 20, and 21, we have been at 15 full-time officers and two part-time. In 2020, we called for 16 full-time and two part-time. That one additional position was an additional investigator. We presently only have one detective, and the workload and the growth that is going on in this township is just overwhelming at this point. You know, we're required by the county to be involved in a number of different task forces, where, you know, we're involved in so many other things as far as investigations go that one person is just not doing it. So what we've been doing this past year is we've been pulling officers in on overtime to assist the detective in cases, and, you know, it's just, the money, it's a waste of money in terms of, you know, if we had the other investigator, it would relieve some of the pressure on us. I've also plugged that position in mid-year to try to help with the budget. When you, and I just want to make a comment about that. Well, let me go back one other thing. In 2023, I had estimated we would need 19 full-time and part-time. At the rate we are moving right now, we're not even going to get close. And the population growth that we're experiencing right now, and the traffic, and that hasn't been mentioned, the LPR system that we have at the bottom of the hill logged 7 million vehicles through this intersection at North Guthrie's, or down here in the Guthrie'sville Village, between August of '20 and August of '21. That was during COVID. COVID is easing up now, we're getting heavier traffic volumes, so you see the question, if you look at the chart, you'll see the question marks on traffic unit. We're trying to handle everything right now with the officers that are on the Patrol Division, but when we're down about four, five officers in a Patrol Division, it's becoming increasingly more difficult to even deal with that. So the position that I have included in the budget is a investigator's position, and that is mid-year. And if you look at the number, I've requested $25,000 for that salary, I've taken it out of other areas of my budget. So it's not really an addition on the budget, I'm shifting things around to be able to cover for that. More the impact of that would not occur until 2023's budget.
Thank you, Chief. And I'm going to proceed to the next decision point here, and I've elected to incorporate the Public Works capital budget into the decision because, frankly, it's a significant amount of money and it's not routine expenditures, and so I think it's important that we pull out the items of this budget that are not recurring or routine. Recommendations for 2021 is the purchase of a new 29,000 gross vehicle weight truck for new snow routes and the new hire. Public Works is proposing purchasing a gator, which will be used for facilities maintenance. The Public Works is proposing the purchase of a utility trailer, and to purchase a replacement fuel system to replace what we've got out in the Public Works area. I'm further recommending that we continue to reserve funds for the Public Works Garage Extension, although I do not anticipate that that would be an expenditure in 2022. I feel the ideal time to do the Public Works Garage Extension is at the same point that we're about to take dedication of the additional land located to the south of the municipal campus that will be used as a mulching area. Last night at the Planning Commission, we heard the first presentation from the developer who has now applied for final plan approval for what is Brandywine Walk, formerly known as the Weaver Tract. Matt, do you have anything to add to decision point number five here?
The 29,000 GVW truck, last year, I think, well, the beginning of this year, I believe it was, our 2005 truck has a lot of rust, and in fact, at one point, the bearings that hold the bed on, when one of my guys raised it up, those bearings rusted off and almost lost the bed off of the back of the, the dump bed off the back of the truck. So we did have that repaired, but that truck is, has been having some problems over the years due to being in salt for most of its life. So that truck would be not only a, an addition, but also a possible replacement for the 2005 in case it goes down again during this year. Normally, we replace the larger trucks every 20 years, but due to the, due to the condition of that truck, it may be 18 years instead of the 20 years. Fuel system has been in the, in the budget for a couple of years now. It's been something that we haven't been able to complete, that the fuel purchase. The utility trailer is an additional trailer. We have more areas to maintain that we have to trailer a meller, and with the addition of the Downforge Sewage Treatment Plant and the two pump stations there, oftentimes, we have to split up our crews to maintain those particular areas.
Thank you. All right. We're getting close to the end here. Remember, there's eight to get through. Decision point number six is the, is the Bonsville Mills' capital budget, and I've elected to include this because it, frankly, it requires some explanation. I want to start with, the capital improvements being made to Bonsville Mill are not being paid from, from the general fund. They're being paid for from the township's capital fund. The capital fund, in turn, was funded by a transfer from the fee in lieu of recreation that we did last year. What is shown in the draft budget represents a significant grant-funded project, and rather than anticipate precisely when the expenditures and revenue reimbursements would arrive in that fund, because again, this is a zero-sum game, we're working in a, in a capital fund where there's generally no new revenues, I compressed all of the projected future reimbursements from grant funding and all of the potential expenditures remaining to satisfy the local match for those into a single year, next year. I do not anticipate that all the reimbursements and all the grant-required activities will be complete in 2022. It's necessary to present it in this way to ensure that we're not using more than the starting balance in the fund. What is activity that is not grant-funded is what's shown in line item 18-451-76A. And I will point out that that is significantly less than what the committee asked me to budget, and the rationale I had for making the cuts that are shown is that, again, to make sure that we don't spend more than the opening balance plus the potential new revenues in the coming year. Jim, did you want to chime in on that?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, I may call on you if there are questions.
I will say that a good amount of that line item you just mentioned, 75, will be focused on bargain projects that's being funded by the grants, so it's money that we need to complete the project.
Now we get to the consequences of staff's recommendations, and that is recommendations in regard to taxes. My recommendations are that we increase the fire services tax from its current .420 mills to .53 mills. The rationale for that decision is prior commitment by the Board of Supervisors to support debt service payments on the fires, on the fire station renovation. My second recommendation as it relates to taxes is that we raise the real estate tax from 2.5 mills to 2.75 mills. My rationale there is to fully fund the many proposals presented today. I have a few other points on taxes. One, the fire service tax is a replacement for a tax that the board repealed in the last, since my tenure began in 2014. We repealed the hydrant tax, and, which was assessed on properties that are adjacent to fire hydrants, and replaced it with a fire services tax that's assessed on all properties. It was anticipated at the point that we made that transition that the fire service tax would be a levy that goes up and down depending on the anticipated expenditures for fire protection in a year. So that, that particular millage has gone up and down at least twice since we made that change. So that, that particular millage has gone up and down at least twice since we made that change. I would mention that as it relates to the, the real estate tax for general purposes, the proposal here is to set the tax rate at where it was 10 years ago. This is not a new high watermark for the township's tax rate. It actually reflects precisely what the tax rate was a decade ago. And I would say that the decision to walk back from that, combined with radical growth in the, the population of the township and our obligations, is part of the reason why we find ourselves today needing to contemplate making changes like this. And then lastly, decision point eight, would be any line item that you have seen in the budget where you would like to ask staff about. And with, with that, I'm happy to call on the team that's present here to answer any questions you may have.
I think I'm going to defer my questions to the end because I'm sure they may get answered by, by others. Me personally, I, I think that we have some guests in the, in the audience. Unless you object to that, I think that I'd like them to go first so that they might answer a question before I ask it.
Yeah, I'm good.
So I guess two people that I know are very well-versed on this would be Ken Eater and Carl Croft. I would defer to each one of you guys to go first, but then we'll go to the audience for additional.
You're good?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, so I think, you know, there's a lot of line item, line items going through here. I think just high level though, Luke, you know, I think my two questions. One is, I know that a lot of this conversations around rightsizing based off the volume growth of those census numbers you projected. I guess the only question is, is, you know, obviously, I think there's some need for increased millage to address that. But the, what is that, that sort of efficiency of growth as well? I guess the main concern is, is we identify volume growth, people, additional miles. But are you, is there efficiency that's gained? Because when we look at, I guess, what's being proposed at 3.28, that's higher than median. So we're using a lot of median numbers out there as well. But 3.28 is higher than median of our colleagues as well. And then along those lines as well, I guess staffing. You know, we look at some of those staffing charts that you put up there, especially on the municipality side there. How does that relate to vendors as well? So a lot of what we do here isn't in-house staffing, but it's vendor use, right? So if we think about number one, if you were to, if you were to compare apples to apples with another municipality that say has council in-house, right? Well, councils, legal is a huge expense, but that's outsourced. A lot of our engineering and those items are outsourced as well. How do those factor in and is, are the staffing numbers that you're presenting misleading if you compare the full expenditures of those items as well?
All right, I think, I think you raise a very valid point about the pitfalls of using benchmarking data as a basis of a justification for an increase. Yes, there are different services provided by different municipalities. I'll use an example. Our neighbors in West Bradford don't outsource their trash service, their employees.
Right.
I would also point out that our neighbors in West Bradford do not have a police department. The, the spirit of the benchmarking is to present the data in the aggregate. And yes, that means there's an asterisk attached. We are in some cases comparing apples to oranges.
And I think that was the main point, just to prove, as far as discussion points. I think, you know, I think the PowerPoint's sort of well-thought-out as far as the different facts to present. You know, and again, you know, I think historically, we would start having these discussions in July, which a lot, would allow for more, more of that. So, you know, we're less than 60 days out and just sort of throwing out their bullet points or sort of the immediate sort of takeaways that sort of jump out from there. One of the other questions is the, the, the numbers used for the, the medical expenses. So for example, and, and you know, I'm just using the police because it's, it's isolated. And I agree with the chief, you know, from, from an actual labor perspective, if coal is at 3%, you're actually only looking at 1.3% total. So that new hire is well offset by, by other sort of staffing and modality changes. When I look at health and medical expenses though, it's a 17% increase year over year on budget. If salaries are going up 1%, so if I think about headcount or total dollars at 1, 1.3%, why are we seeing such a significant mass jump on, on the benefits? Are those numbers locked in? Are these still proposed numbers for the year?
No, also a very good question. There are two significant expenditures for which we have not received from our vendor a 2022 estimate. That would be risk management, so our liability insurance. We will not have those figures until December. The second is we do not have health insurance rates. So the, it, I will speak for myself and I presume that, that the chief followed a similar logic in calculating his rates, is that we were extraordinarily cautious in anticipating, A, that any new hire would come in as, and would opt into a family plan, whereas we may be hiring a single individual. And we were also making worst-case scenario assumptions about the, the potential rate hike.
Right.
I would just, I would chalk up that significant change to extremely conservative budget practice.
Okay, so in theory though, between now and 1231, that, that would be, would be gapped as well. You know, what I'm looking for is the overall sort of these massive swings, trying to understand how, how locked in they are and then which influences obviously other decisions as well, right?
We had been given a range by the insurance carrier.
Right.
For, for example, the police department, Ken. I chose to, to take the high number they gave us, plug it in, knowing and praying that it's going to come in
Right.
way lower.
Gotcha, okay. Debt service expense really is jumping up as well, 23% year over year. I thought in, in prior years when we were looking at the, the long-range debt, it was actually tailing down over, you know, it's, you know, it's going to be the parks, this building. Is there a reason why that's jumping up almost, I mean, 2020 actual to 2022 budget of 100, 150,000?
Yeah, we refinanced this year.
Okay, wouldn't that make it go down?
It, it would, it makes the debt, it makes the, the interest we're paying down, yes. We refinanced for the purpose of getting all of our interest. But the, I'm following the amortization chart from the refinance.
So do we narrow down the window of what we're paying on the refinance? It just seems odd if we refinance.
I'm going to have to answer that question. That's going to require more research. The, the, let me, let me give you the, the, the budget writer's answer to that. That's a figure I know. I, I reference what the debt service is in the amortization chart and I write that in that column.
Okay.
I did not do the analysis. I expected it to be different because we refinanced. And I did not do any further analysis than that, so we'll have to talk. Unfortunately, my answer is going to be I need to do more research.
Yeah, and that's fine. I think right now it's just about raising questions, all right? So I mean, I think that would be an item just to better understand. It's a significant increase, understanding the, the, the long-term value of that versus, you know, the immediate extra 150,000 expense. And then with the, with the fire services, the other sort of open item as well. I know, Luke, you had some, some, some grant funds that were proposed about two months ago for discussion that might be able to support the, the firehouse construction expenses. Any, any update on that?
If, let's take a trip back to the PowerPoint. If, if, if you recall this, the funds, one of the, the bullet points under the capital fund there is the American Rescue Plan. That is segregated funds that were received from the legislation this year. The next slide is the, again, what we prepared budgets for. You'll see that the American Rescue Plan funding, the bullet point is in red. I have not prepared a budget for the use of the American Rescue Plan funds. The reason is that the, the Treasury has not released final rules on the use of those funds. But that represents between 500 and a million, 500,000 and a million dollars in additional revenues there. But it is one time.
For sure, for sure.
And what we're proposing, the majority of what we're proposing, capital budgets aside, are cyclical expenditures, not one time.
Okay. I think that is, so then just the other assumption without the, the back information. So ultimately, it looks like you're, from a standard real estate tax, you're looking at about a 1.1% growth based off volume, just sort of residential volume year over year, it sounds like.
May I interrupt you on, 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 on that? For, for most of the large revenue sources, so let's use the yield on the earned income tax. Those, that estimate is based on linear projection. So I've used the growth trend and projected it into the future. The real estate tax, however, is calculated on the basis of an estimated total property value, the millage applied, and then a collection rate of 99% assumed. So that is, that is not a linear projection. That is a, based on anticipated actual.
Correct, which is, which is a great, I think, number for, for basing all this. When we talk about rightsizing, what we're talking about a year-over-year growth on actuals is about a 1.1% increase in this municipality, right? Okay, great. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you. I think a lot of the rest are just sort of policy, sort of staffing, efficiency items.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks.
So I wanted you to go first. You covered two-thirds of what I had written down, so you saved me from.
And that is an enormous calculator. I'm quite jealous.
When I bring up my calculator, I used to bring up the calculator at the school board meetings and all the other directors would go, oh my God. All right, I did get a copy of the budget yesterday, so I, I've had a couple, I've had an opportunity to go, go through it last night a couple of times on, from the 10,000-foot perspective. I've actually met with, with Matt and Mark and Luke. So, so a lot of the stuff in here didn't surprise me, surprise me. So some of my questions are going to be kind of a little detailed, detailed. Again, I'm going to try not to ask questions because Ken already covered. I think my first, let's start from the, the top here. You get a, from the county around mid-November, you normally get a, a final assessed value of your real estate. So that's not reflected in here yet. I know they give you monthly estimates.
Yeah, so as I had mentioned for, for kids questioning, the, the assumptions for yield on the real estate tax is the assessed valuation, 99% collection rate and the millage.
But you don't have the final assessed valuation.
That is exactly correct.
Right.
The, the source of the total assessed valuation, the non-exempt total valuation was the tax collector. I do not have the Chester County Assessor's certified signed copy of statement evaluations. That has not been received.
Right, that's what I'm referring to. It usually doesn't come out to mid-November.
Yes, I do not have that in hand. The, the base came from figures calculated by the, the tax collector.
Okay, so that number can change, most likely will change.
It, it, it will. I don't know how material the change will be, but I'll guarantee you it's different.
Right, okay. Well, that, generally, it doesn't go down.
Fair enough.
Okay, that's the point I wanted to make. So there is some, possible some additional revenues. On the 2.75, I think we had that rate as recently as five or six years ago, not 10. That was the rate when I, when it first got on the budget committee. And although it's a high rate, I, I am sympathetic to the arguments I've heard you make, make, make today. So I'm, I'm not, I don't have any comment on, on, on that right now. On the Covid funds that you explained, I'm going to call them Covid funds. They have not issued the final regulations yet. Do you have any anticipation as to when they might be finalized?
Sorry, I'm also driving the video machine here, so I'm toggling back and forth between the two of us. We were told mid-October, so, so we're well past what I thought we would have. I, I can say this, that I, there is an important part of that that is, one of the eligible uses is revenue replacement, which would be a transfer from the funds that we've received from the federal government to the general fund. And that represents replenishing the general fund for revenues we would have collected but for the pandemic.
Correct.
And I have calculated that amount to be approximately $180,000. And as soon as the Treasury, the, the Treasury produces final rules on, on how you make such a transfer, a resolution, how you report and the like, I would recommend that the board make that transfer to the general fund.
And that's not in your proposed budget?
That is not in my budget.
All right, does everybody understand that? I know you all do, okay. All right, so there's a potential $180,000 that can help, help, help absorb the budget, possibly reduce the taxes and possibly hit all your, your wish list items.
Yes, I, I'm going to, I'm going to quibble just a little. And that is that
Just a citizen.
What, what, what we're proposing as changes are cyclical in nature. And the, 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 we can get through 2022 without a tax increase is a one-time thing. You'd just be postponing the pain.
All right, no, no. Maybe I should, I, I didn't want to be specific, but I am not, I am not unsympathetic to a 2.75 millage tax. You know, I'm not a tax person. But that, since that was our rate, and I agree with your argument that the township has to find a rate that's reasonable vis-à-vis the amount of services it provides and then stick to that rate. You know, we're not going to go through, in the next 10 years, we're not going to go through another 3,000 people growth because there isn't that much more developable land. So, which brings up a whole nother issue, but that's five years down the road. So I'm not, you know, if the supervisors ask my opinion, that's my opinion. It's, it's, you got to find that a happy number that you can plan down the road and live with as time goes on. Okay, that's, I'm going to go back to specifics, but so I, I'm, I want to let you know I'm not quibbling. I just, and 180, quite frankly, should go to more of the capital items or into the surplus and be transferred at the end of the year.
That, that, that's what's in, that is what is in my mind's eye as well. But again, with very conservative budgeting practices, I don't count those chickens until they hatch.
Just want to let the audience know. Okay. On the debt, you mentioned the debt, and I had a question on the debt too. I knew you, I knew you refinanced. You borrowed additional monies. That's why the payment's up it, didn't it?
No, we, we did not, we,
Structured it.
Right, so the, there were
Why didn't you lump it together instead of spreading, spreading it out a little more?
But there's, there's actually, so there's, there's two bonds. There's a 2021 Series A and Series B.
Right.
One is a lump sum of past projects, namely the building we're sitting in, the community park, and seed money that was used for the open space fund. So that
Add to the balance of the open space note, the, the 20.
We're pretty close to retiring that debt.
Right, it's, it was a 20-year note, and I think it was issued in 2003 or 2005. Me?
Yeah, so
What a memory. I'm old and I can still remember.
I just remember things.
Right, so the one bond issue is, in fact, consolidated past obligations. The other one, and it is distinct for a reason, is that that is the one that was used to purchase the excess capacity built in the Apple Cross wastewater treatment plant. And we have, while the, the bond was obtained using the credit of the township, we have a repurchase agreement with the municipal authority to retire that debt.
Is that, is the capacity we purchased, is that resellable at some point?
That is sort of the spirit of a sewer connection fee.
But I'm asking, is it realistically, is it realistic that it could be resold at some point?
As in, we sell the wastewater treatment plant in its entirety?
No, 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 that we sell that capacity, that somebody, a developer comes in and buys that capacity.
Yes, that's exactly the idea of a connection fee. That they are, the connection fee is the one-time revenue that's associated with new development that would be used to retire that debt.
And that money, according to the, according to the debt note, would that money then go directly against the principal of that note?
What, I don't know what the detail of the repayment agreement is.
And I don't want to get into weeds.
The idea is that, yes, the impact fees.
Make a note that in 50-some days, I want to, I'll need the details on that.
Fair enough.
I don't want to waste it.
I think the big takeaway on that, though, is that last, last year's budget, I remember we had a huge discussion about this because of the refinance, or maybe it was two years ago, I forget the time at this point, but it was like a $20,000 to $30,000 a year savings. So I'm just getting stuck on, we were at one point saying, "Great refinance, save $20,000, $30,000." Now we're saying it's up $150,000, so there's just...
Right, no, I agree with you. You don't refinance unless there's going to be a savings.
Right, so there's something else that's not connected.
There's something missing in there, right.
My answer is I need to do more research. If you put me on the spot, my hunch is that the term was shortened.
Probably the right, right answer. We bought capacity that needs to be sold.
No, we didn't buy any, we weren't taking any additional debt.
All, both Series A and B were refinancing existing debt.
But didn't the debt switch from the authority to us?
No, it was always in the township's name. I've already stated that my answer is I need to do more research. I will show my cards and say my hunch. I think we shortened the term of the debt, hence the debt service is higher. That's my hunch.
Okay. No, I understand, and we're not going to solve it this morning, you're right, it's need to get into it, all right. And then you'll have additional COVID funds, funds that, when they come out with the, with the questions, or the, or how to apply it, we can, I believe it's more going to end up into the capital reserves than it's going to be into a general fund situation. And is there a possibility that you're going to pay, the township's going to have to pay some back?
The reason it is administratively segregated is that if we don't lose, don't use it, we lose it.
Lose it, but how long do you have, you have two years?
Again, erring on the side of caution, let me do some research. I think it's longer than that.
All right.
I, my, again, more research required, my hunch is 2024, which is...
All right, so that's an issue to be determined after the budget, probably. Again, Ken hit most of my points here. I understand the explanation on why you'd like to hire an officer mid-year, and it does, it does make sense, but when you and I met, I was under the impression, or you left me with the impression, Chief, that at least for 2022, you were happy with your current staffing. So in my mind, what has changed since we met about six weeks ago?
No, when we spoke, what I explained a couple weeks ago was that as of November, one of the full-time sergeants is retiring.
Correct.
So we talked about that being...
Making the part-time, full-time.
Right, correct. And then we would be adding the part-timer, okay, but I did, we did discuss adding another full-time equivalent mid-year.
All right, well, that went over my head then, I apologize, okay.
Yeah.
And the other points, I liked, I liked your presentation very much there, there, Luke. I, you're across the board, across the living adjustments, is, I agree with all that. I actually agree with the Public Works staffing, staffing request. Being on past budget committees, the request for another person's been on the table for at least, this will be the third year maybe, and I know that they can't keep up with the work they have. I had a problem in a stormwater, and it took them almost a year to get to it, so I can under, I can understand. On the insurance, other governmental units that I made some quick checks on, most of their health insurance rates are not going up or even going down for 2022. Did they give you any idea? You took the high range, and I can understand that. You always want to take the high range, you always don't, you don't want to set expectations too low, but what range did they give you on the medical?
It was...
And you're basically self-insuring, you're in a consortium that's self-insuring, basically, right?
Yes, so for, we participate in the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trusts, Health Insurance Trust, that is the one trust we're a member of. And Chief, you got the range, if you'd refresh...
It was 5% to 8% is what they told us.
Wow, that's shocking to me. That's shocking to me. I would have expected maybe a 1% to 2%.
Yeah, and that, I mean, until we get them, we don't know what it's going to be, but I've done the same thing, I've heard different...
I actually checked yesterday with the school district, and they're down 1.3%.
Is there a way to consortium this with another, like he said, with the school board? I mean, RFP is one thing, but, but councils of government merging together?
Well, we did move from commercial health insurance a few years ago. So we were buying that through Valick, which is a commercial provider. Was it Valick? No, KT, KT Benefits was the broker. I'm reluctant to make a recommendation until we see what it actually is. What we're dealing with right now is...
But it's too easy to say, "Okay, 5% is good, 5% is good," when across the board, it's 2% where it's going down, or it's even. It's too easy to just say, "Yeah, that's acceptable." It's not acceptable.
It is, so let's, we have not shopped health insurance around since about, I want to say about 2018.
Right, it was about three years ago.
I will say, for the, for the purposes of planning for 2022, there is no way I will have a better quote before you need to advertise a budget.
Right, this is a long, you're, you're not going to be able to change plans in 2022.
By everywhere, I think it should be noted to the supplier that, you know, sharpen some pencils, because this is, this is crazy. And, and again, like Carl just stated, when you have a school district that's dropping, and other municipalities are up two to three, and we're going up on an anticipated five, it's almost like you're catering to the man, saying, "Sure, whatever you want to do." And I think it should be noted to them that, you know, we, we're not happy about it.
There's a number of factors that affect the rate, rate, rate. I'm not familiar with the Delaware Valley, but it's, the concept is good. What you have to do is get into the weeds. What are they charging you for overhead?
Right.
What, who's administer, who's actually administrator, I believe it's through Aetna?
Yes, Aetna is the network that...
Right, but somebody, and something, there's an in-between company between the Delaware Valley, whatever, and Aetna that you hire a manager who processes the claims and makes sure they're all, so there's a whole bunch of moving pieces in there. If somebody's getting a bigger cut than others, that's where the RFP comes in, so that you can try to maximize it. I mean, medical costs are medical costs. It's processing those costs and having the overhead to manage the self-insuring group is where your costs can get out of whack. I mean, people are using the same hospitals, the same doctors, et cetera. Do you know what I'm getting at?
Careful, we may not have the same hospitals anymore.
Well, that's true, too. And I know, again, I don't want to refer to the school, but the school, the school district constantly keeps on top of that administrator to narrow the claim costs, you know. They might charge $2.50 for a claim, and now we've got them down to $1.85. Doesn't sound like much, but, you know, when you have thousands and thousands of claims, it adds up. Anyway, just, but Luke is right, there's no way you can make a change.
But, and, and I certainly hear what Supervisor Scribner is saying, and I do think that we have ability to negotiate. But it, at this point, it's speculation. I don't know what that rate is.
Right.
Can't negotiate it.
We're preparing for the worst.
I'm going to move on here, because you can't, it's not going to, you just have to wait till you get your rate. Matt, I looked in the budget and under the liquid fuels tax, you had an amount for a truck, and then in the general fund, that's, that's just one truck, that's two pieces for one truck, right?
Correct.
So the truck's $180,000?
Yes.
That's with the plow and everything?
Yes.
Okay, well, I've lost, I've lost reality touch with the truck, truck costs. Okay, so that's, that's how you split that up, okay.
Matt, while you're on that, while he just touched on that, what, what do we have? What, was it an F-550 that we had before?
No, that's, it's the same thing, it's 29,000 GBW.
Right.
The 2005?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the bigger trucks.
Okay. But I saw in the 76,000, that's what we originally paid for the 2005? In the budget, under the original? I don't know if that was the original cost of the 2005 truck, or if that was prorated for the 2005 big truck, 76,000?
Without, again, without doing the research, I anticipate that a similar thing happened with the acquisition of that truck, that it was purchased out of two funds. So you would want to cross-reference that 75 between the capital and the solid, and the liquid fuels fund.
Okay. Yeah, they used to be, they were around $160,000.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious why the sudden jump, if, I know this is a bad market right now, if you're buying any vehicles.
The new emissions and everything are causing, anything that's diesel to go through the roof.
Sorry, Carl, go ahead.
I understand the request for an assistant township manager, but as a supervisor-elect, I'd like to, my feelings is I'd like to be able, able to have been sworn in and have access to go over, I've seen your organization chart, Luke has shared that with me a couple times, times, to at least get an understanding of who's doing what responsibilities, and seeing what might be changed around. Your presentation this morning talked about, maybe it's an assistant super, township manager, but they're doing other things, or what have you. So I would like, I personally would like some input in that before you run out and hire the first of the year, because I assume the salary you put in there is for a whole year. It was $65,000.
So my thoughts on that were, the ask today, in giving feedback on a draft, so that a budget can be presented for the Board's consideration on November 18th, is to leave room in the budget for a hire. I, the, the job description would come before the Board prior to advertising it. And I don't see, so there, so there isn't a job description or a title. I'm asking to reserve for staff, exactly. And I would anticipate that no progress towards hiring would happen before the first quarter of 2022.
That was my point, right.
So, so the ask is, can we leave some room for a hire? The details to be determined.
Right, and my point was, you may not need as much room. That's all, that's all I was saying.
I'm a sole caution.
Okay. For now, that's my questions. All the other stuff is, like you said, is lineal. I think Kyle might have a couple questions. You've never had a, you've never had a, being on the Budget Committee for eight years, years, and I hope you bring that back next year, but you've never had, had excess stuff in there for supplies, or all the little miscellaneous stuff it takes to run an organization, and I didn't see anything in there this time. So thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience have any questions before the Board talks about this?
You want me to go first? You want to go first?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so mine, I guess I'm pretty simple, and I'm glad that I had these guys go ahead of me, because a lot of this, and I've had the opportunity, a lot of this was covered, I had the opportunity to talk to the tax collector, I had the opportunity to talk to some of the Finance Committee guys. If I were to look in my crystal ball, I can promise you, the Finance Committee will be back next year. It is a missed entity. In six years of being here at East Brandywine, we were able to lower taxes three times. Carl, when I found out he was interested in running, he was able to keep in the school board taxes the same for eight years. We are an integral part of keeping the taxpayers happy. Raising taxes is never a solution in my book, and so I can tell you right now, I'm a hard no on raising the, the real estate taxes. We've had this discussion before, sometimes it stinks, we've got to sharpen our pencils, and there's going to be things that we can't afford. I can tell you, I'll pick on Public Works really quickly, a truck is necessity, a Public Works employee is a necessity, a gator is a unneeded cost. I have no problem putting these things in the budget, and in the perfect world, if it's something that we can afford, we do it. But you run a township the same as you run your own house, it's your checkbook in your pocket, if you don't have the money, you don't spend the money. We have a lot of simple things on here, I had some questions on, I'll start with just a couple of them that were really easy. The, the electric, our electric bill is consistently going up $5,000 a year. We just spent all that money on those LED light conversions, why, why is our electric going up $5,000 when we just spent all that money on LED conversions?
I'm going to have to answer that with, it would require more research. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we need to, first of all, when you convert over to LED, did we go back to Pico or our supplier and tell them everything that we converted to get that lower rate? Or are we still paying on regular usage?
We received a grant from Pico to reimburse some of the capital cost of the transition to LED. So Pico's credit to us, in addition to lower use, is a grant, it was about $5,000 to help offset the cost of the acquisition. I will say, again, the short answer is I need more research. The longer answer is, at least part of it, is that we have one new meter, and that is Bonsville Mill Park is a, is a new meter for which we're paying.
Well, that one's a low-hanging fruit that's easy to figure out. The 100% agreement, we need to figure out what this great grant money is going to be able to be used for. We have COVID expenses that we've paid out of pocket, we have a new firehouse that will have, benefit everybody with the, with the COVID services, we have police that will benefit everybody with the COVID service, we need to get on the ball with that and figure that one out. That one's, that one's a big-ticket item that we have to address. We have a newsletter that's $20,000. I love the newsletter, don't get me wrong, but maybe we shortcut it to twice a year and put the other two online, digital download. Again, it's, it's probably mostly postage and printing, I'm assuming is where the cost is on that. These are little, easy victories that we can simplify, and again, a simple Facebook post out there, "Don't forget, download the digital copy of the newsletter." It would be, again, simple, 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 little, little issue. The new hires, again, I said I'm not, I'm not necessarily concerned with... The new hires, again, I said, I'm not, I'm not necessarily concerned with. I know that they're, they're a necessity. I would say not all new hires, but for Public Works and Police, I'm okay with. I would, I would tell you that, you know, in staff, immediate staff, yes, there's, there's some help needed, but I, I haven't settled 100% on that. I wanted to ask, Matt, Matt, do we have a part-time Public Works right now?
We do not.
Okay, because that, that was the question I had. If there was somebody that was part-time, I, I didn't see it, but I was trying to figure that out. One question I had and I see, I say David Summers is in the audience here, and I had a question about the park events and marketing. We had a, for the park events and marketing, we had $10,252 budgeted for that and last year we spent $690. Do you know off the top of your head what that was for?
The movies, the concerts?
I, I was just trying to figure, because we've done that in the past. And we had, if you go, and maybe the budget isn't reflecting all of this, but 2017 through 2021, it was, I'm sorry, through 2020, it was zero dollars spent. Last year was 690. I'm sure you probably haven't gotten all the bills yet, but how, we, we, we went from 690 last year to, or this year, rather, to 10,000 for next year.
Okay, so the, the, I, I'll say to, to the, to Parks and Recreation Committee's credit, they don't use their entire allocation.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just received, there was something I was missing that we were doing, a function that I wasn't paying attention to.
I, I would attribute the, the major year-over-year growth in that is that there were not events during COVID.
How many, how many, do you remember off the top of your head, how many events we did for movies in the parks except this year and concerts?
This year, there were, I think there were four, four concerts and three movies.
Okay, yeah, I just, like I said, that, that was just, when you look at the, when you're going through the overall budget to see that spike, I was trying to figure out what, what that was accounting for. I think everybody else asked the questions that I had, had on my sheet. Bonsville, I guess that was my, my last one. For, just, just remind me, for the Bonsville Mill, we, we were doing about $60,000 a year and then we upped it to 100,000 at, last year or the year before to make up for something that was, that was needed. And then I just want to be clear, and first of all, the volunteers for Bonsville Mill are imperative to what we, we do in this township. If we didn't have them, then the project would be at a standstill. And I'm just trying to figure out, I, I saw that it was dropped to 75,000, which doesn't, doesn't scare me overall, but where we are is that 75,000 in addition to the grant that money, or is that a sidestep?
That's, that's in addition to the grant money. We're, we're going to name that from the equipment that we need to garden project. If you recall, last year, we put out the bid, the garden project, and we got that ridiculous bids. The phases one and two, we had budgeted $475,000. And we were getting back bids twice that, four times that, 801.6 million. And we had to revisit how we approached that work. And we, we broke out phase one and bid that, put a vertical and removed the concrete pad. For phase two, the volunteers are doing all the labor. So that is how we are able to do the project.
Yep.
The volunteer work for phase three. For phase three, we will be purchasing plants at the direct purchase and grant reimbursement and phase four is a partner. So phase two is the, is installation of, of the art scape utilities, the amended soils, which we're paying for, which will be reimbursed by grants. But there is expenses related to the volunteers doing work that we need to cover. So primarily, the money that we're asking for in this year's budget is focused on the support that's needed for the volunteers to do that work.
Okay, like I said, I knew that, I knew that there was a lot of, you know, obviously the volunteers are unbelievable and it, it cuts that cost down significantly. If it was a applied project where you were getting bids at 800 to a million dollars to do and we're cutting that clearly in half by using the, the, the volunteers, I mean, it's a no-brainer. I think that was my only, and again, you know, this is preliminary and we're close in my book, but we're, there's some, some things, some, some of the fat has to get cut off of the meat a little bit.
Mr. Scribner, if I could clarify, you, you, for the decision point number seven, recommended no change to the, the real estate tax. Would that be for the fire services and for general purposes that you don't support a tax increase?
So, the fire service is a little different. Now, one thing, and again, I'm not picking on the fire company, but when, when we agreed to fund this fire, firehouse, part of that agreement we did talk about was we needed to know what contributions were coming in from the outside as well. Because if it was even $10,000 that we could say, okay, now we're down to 90,000, you know what I mean? So we need to make sure, and it doesn't have to be long-term, but we need to make sure that we're at least accounting for every dime that's going towards, towards it in, in the overall flex. I know that you guys had some, some increases probably too. I'm thinking, right? Because I know there's some.
Correct, there've been a few change orders and issues related to construction that everybody's seeing right now, supply chain and all that.
Yeah, and that might offset all of that. But like I said, across the board, there's definitely ways that we can all put our boots on, figure it out. Obviously, the fire services tax, that's a commitment from the township and, and, you know, that, that, that is what it is. But real estate tax for, you know, I have a hard time telling taxpayers, and again, it's, it's, it's little things that you add up, you know, that I think, the trailers, the, the gators, the, the, you know, I'm not picking on Public Works, it's just those are the first things that come to my mind. Even if we go used with that, if it's an absolute necessity or, or off of, off of, and I know that this is a line item with the highest possible budget, I understand that. It probably will never even get to that number. But there's, there's little areas where we can cut these. You, you got the, the tax collector, I talked with him yesterday. He's going to have 40 or 50,000 dollars coming in from, from levy tax issues that were resolved. Those are things that aren't accounted for in this budget that will, will be accounted for sooner rather than later as well as the COVID thing. It's very important that we figure that out and find out what other people are doing. There's a, you know, a, a new fire station being built that it could be used towards. There's, you know, cleaning costs for the township building right now. You know, many, many, many different areas.
So I'm, I'm not going to sit here and say that, that an increase in taxes is off the table. I'm, I'm not a fan of taxes anyhow, obviously, but I am sympathetic to the, the growth that has, we've experienced since 2000 with 44%. I just, I would like to kind of take a look at, you know, as far as the, the cost of living and increases. I know there hasn't been any, really any increases in our staff's wages and I think that I would be, I would like to see the employment, the reviews, you know, for our staff and, and be able to take it from there to see what, you know, the performance wise and where we can prove, where we don't have to prove to get a better look. But as far as the, you know, as far as, just off the top of my head, without any important order, or just, this is the way I just jotted it down though, but as far as the, like the mowing of the parks, I like to take a look at some of the, like future acres as far as like the automated programs out there that I think that would be something that we should look into. You know, I just, I look at, you know, I think we need to get larger mowers. But anyhow, as far as an assistant manager or a manager or that whole thing, I've seen Luke, I think that, Luke, you're doing a great job with the transition. I think that it's a tough position because of the amount of, you have to be here during the day, you know, for, for everyday activities as well as the evening for the commissions and try to, try to close that information gap between the commissions, their heads, what questions they're asking, what the township's directions are. And without having a board of supervisors there or a public meeting at every, you know, so to speak, every week, it's, it's a tough thing. And I think that, that's something that we need to look into as far as how to close that gap and, and make it a little bit more of a, almost a desirable position, so to speak. Maybe a paid intern, you know, for, for, to take minutes at the meetings at night, maybe. You know, something to look into or having our commission members as far as the leaders have more input and have more ability to make decisions. I know, you know, Bruce, you do a great job in planning commission. Jim, you do a great job. Sally Lammy does a great job. The, the Parks and Rec with Dave and I think everybody's doing a good job. I think that if we could try to get some kind of circle back around to the commissions and try to figure out how we can be more efficient as far as that gap between the, the actual business and the, and the public servant. As far as Bonsville Mill, I think you guys are doing a great job. I think that your committee is probably the most impressive, in my opinion, as far as the, to be able to see the results of, of, of a vision from over the years. And I was, I will say, I was against it before I ran, you know, I'll say it, but I, I have come to enjoy the park, enjoy the, the members and the committee members and their vision. So I like to see, I know that you've done the projection of your planning and everything, which has been great. And I think that we need to incorporate this and make sure that we include your outlook in the comprehensive plan update so we can actually see what the future is. Because again, just like with the land and the real estate, like Carl said, there is going to be a point where the park's done, completed to the desire of the residents and now it's just upkeep and, and maintenance and scheduling and whatnot. I think we need to look at all of our parks for that, but, and as far as the, you know, you keep seeing this cost of increase every year and, but I don't think that we are, as a township, are, are being fair. As far as, I'll give you an example, Public Works, you know, stick and mulching and cleanup, I would have to say that we're, I'm assuming, we're losing a lot of money. It's costing us a lot of money when other businesses, you know, make money doing the same thing. I, I think that we need to adjust our pricing to, to reflect the, the consumer price index and, and take that in consideration a little bit more because, you know, if it's 8.6, 8% increase, you know, that's just another 8% we're losing. I mean, at the end of the day, for what you're, you know, for, for at least 6% of what we're undercharging. So as far as the actual wish lists, I'd have to take a look at more as far as staffing. I think that with a new change in the board, I, I do think that it'd be, I prefer to have Mr. Croft's input once he's sworn in, you know, or I like to hear him anyway, but. They're just my overall, as far as the police, I think that I do understand how you, you know, you're in a tough situation because you're the majority of the budget. I think you're doing a great job fumbling the numbers, trying to appease the board. I think that the public should know the difference between the other stations as far as not just looking at a, you know, you look at that graph of the crime rates and I don't think it does enough justice as far as where we're at as a township as far as, if you look at, I think we had a discussion, what was it, Cowne? Well, Dangtown just, what, got rid of all part-time and went full-time to 28? Or is it 28? 28 officers, you know, we have 15. Cowne is up four this year, four, four new hires. So it is a, something that the township needs to take into.